Two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the December 2nd meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Bill Twist, followed by the in, I'm sorry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
You bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we just come and ask that you would guide us tonight as we make decisions for the city. We ask that you would watch over all of our citizens as the holiday seasons come up, just watch them on the roadways and as many people might be traveling. And we just ask a special blessing on this city that we might grow and have the economic development that we might need. And we ask that in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. I just said, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Thank you. Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Schwizer?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Severt?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mrs. Oda? Mr. Kendall?
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to excuse Mrs. Oda. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda is excused.
Move to excuse Mr. Kendall.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Severt and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to excuse Mr. Kendall. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall is excused.
Tonight, Madam President, I believe you have a presentation on behalf of Rumke of Ohio.
Well, thank you, Madam President. As we all know, Rumke and the city of Troy have entered into a partnership to, to improve recycling efforts in our city. And we have continued to do that. I've asked Jerry Mollins, our street foreman, to come forward. And I would also like the Starns, Chris Starns and family, to come forward as well. There, there they come. I just want to, as they come forward, their mission is to try to improve the landfills to protect our environment. That was a goal they, they've established for themselves. And their other goal is to recycle more than they put in their trash containers and trash bins. And they have done that. And so I would like to make this presentation to the Starns' family. Chris, if you want to come forward and accept on behalf of your family and to thank you again for all your efforts to recycle, protect our environment, improve our community. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Mollins, for being here this evening. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the November 18th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, November 18, 2019. The winners of the winter ban con, winter banner contest were announced. Committee reports, Finance Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing purchase of fuel for the next three years and also bidding certain supplies. Personnel Committee recommended legislation be prepared amending the hourly rate of seasonal employees to comply with the minimum wage and also to increase one FSLA exempt wage to meet current requirements. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for the concession operations at the Duke Park. Streets and sidewalks committee provided a report regarding amending the ordinances related to keeping sidewalks clean and free of snow. That was discussed. Committee also recommended legislation be prepared authorizing final assessment for Phase 11 of the sidewalk improvement program. Resolution number R-51, 2019, purchase of fuel in the next three years was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R-52, 2019, authorizing bidding and contracting for certain supplies for the next three years was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R-53, 2019, operation of concessions at Paul Duke Park was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-38, 2019, amending salary ordinance related to seasonal wages was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-39, 2019, amending salary ordinance related to one range in the FSLA exempt ordinance was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance number O-40, 2019, loving assessments Phase 11 of sidewalk improvement program was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-41, 2019, amending Section 521 of the codified ordinances was given first reading. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:43 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Move on to committee reports. The first committee report this evening is from the Finance Committee in Mr. Kendall's absence. Mr. Severt?
Sure. You want to do it?
I don't care.
I'm here.
I have my own.
On November 20th, the Finance Committee and all members of the council met for a review of the 2020 budget. This budget reflects the mayor's and council's number one priority of economic development. We note that a budget must be a working document and we anticipate some reoperations during the year. The work and cooperation of the mayor, city administration, and department heads is appreciated in developing the budget document. It is the recommendation of this committee that the 2020 budget of the city of Troy be approved by the preparation and adoption of the appropriation ordinance. The appropriation includes funding for agencies and we recommend that legislation be prepared authorizing the following 2020 expenditures. Troy Development Council, $125,000. Troy Main Street, $55,000. Troy Recreation Association, Inc., $29,000. Respectfully submitted, John Schwizer, myself, and Tom Kendall as chairman, in absentia.
Are there any questions from council members? Thank you. The next report comes from the Law and Ordinance Committee and Chairman, Mr. Schwizer.
Thank you, Madam President. On November 19th, committee members Phillips and Schwizer met to review the information provided by the law director of his intent to continue the practice of allowing attorneys as assistant law director attorneys that may work for the firm and authorize a contractual agreement to continue the practice of reimbursement associated with duties performed by the firm on behalf of the city. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to authorize the law director to delegate as assistant law directors and clerical staff persons who are also associated with him at his law firm. Authorize the director of public service and safety of the city of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement with the law firm of Shipman Dixon and Livingston Company, LPA, for the provision of legal services and clerical assistance subject to the funds appropriated. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Severt, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Schwizer. The next report comes from Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Chairman, Mr. Bobby Phillips.
Thank you, ma'am. This committee met on November 26th to consider additional amendments to Section 521.06 of the codified ordinances to include language regarding grass, yard waste, and if the penalty section should be amended to be a fine rather than a criminal offense of a minor misdemeanor. It was noted that the penalty provision is how the current longstanding ordinance reads. As the longstanding ordinance language reads, it is currently illegal for obstructions to be placed on the sidewalk, curb, or gutter. The proposed language provides clarification. It is the recommendation of this committee that ordinance number O-41-2019 be amended to provide that Section 521.06 of the codified ordinances be further amended to include language of, no person shall dump, discharge, sweep, or otherwise deposit grass, yard, or lawn clippings onto any public street, and remove language of whoever violates this section is guilty of a minor misdemeanor, and substitute language to provide that the city may issue tickets or fines to violate. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council members?
May I make a comment on this, Madam President? There were several comments at the last council meeting, suggestions from folks in the, in the audience. One in particular was establishing a volunteer list of persons that would go out and, and do sidewalks or driveways for folks. This was not discussed at the committee level. However, it, it might be prudent for either the senior citizen center or churches or other organizations that deal with seniors in mass numbers to look at, at providing volunteers or compiling volunteer lists to, to give those services to those that may solicit them. So it is an outstanding idea, but one that was not discussed and I had forgot to bring that up at the time of the committee meeting. So that's kind of the thinking as far as that goes, and that's the only comment I have on that.
Okay. Is that something that, Mr. Tidderington, is that something that could be compiled at, like, on the website or something like that, that the city would?
It would probably be better if we facilitated that through an outside organization so that they could keep track of those. Our website's not really set up for, for that kind of back and forth.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Are there any other committee reports this evening? We now open the meeting to citizen comments. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Grant Kerber is our timekeeper.
Good evening, Bradley Baron, 105 Crestwood, Troy. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Phillips for mentioning that program. I was the gentleman who mentioned it at the last meeting, and what I would like to ask is if, and I'm going to put him on the spot here a little bit. I got this idea for a volunteer list from a program that was started in Pickwa several years ago called Involve, and I would like to ask Councilmember Lutz if he would explain that a little bit, maybe to put it in better framework of what the Involve program entailed. Do you, I hope you do not mind.
I would just say that since that's not on our agenda tonight, per se.
But it is involving the sidewalk ordinance, and it, it kind of draws off of that. Maybe that, maybe I can save that for the end of the meeting, maybe? Would that be better?
Perhaps, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my name's Deborah Pike, and I live on 412 Ella Street. And I mostly just wanted to ask some answers to some of the questions I have. I didn't bring my notes the last time, so I looked to, but anyway, how does the city figure out what streets to plow first? Like, what section? You have section, Zone 1, Zone 2, Zone 3, Zone 4. And then you have sidewalk snow removal with the John Deere. And my question is, it says secondary sidewalks. West, West Mean, Mayor Park, King's Chapel, Malapoint. Why in King's Chapel gets snow removal? Is it sidewalks?
I know the answer to most of that question, but I'm going to defer that to Mr. Kendall.
Mr. Tidderington, do you want to start with us?
Sure. So our priorities on plowing streets are, we start with the mains and the bridges. We then do the secondary roads, and these are classifications that we take from the state of Ohio, designated by size, volume of cars that travel, et cetera, as well as highway designation. And then we do the locals and the cul-de-sacs. I'm not sure exactly what you are looking at there, but if it came from the park department?
Yeah, it says sidewalk snow removal list. John Deere and?
Okay, so that would be, that would be for the park department? And that would be our list of priorities for sidewalks as well as parking lots and public spaces related primarily to the parks.
And parks. So in other words, when it says secondary sidewalks, it's just talking about King's Chapel Park? Not their sidewalks?
It's not, we, we do not plow or, or do the sidewalks in, in King Chapel subdivision just in the park. I believe your time's up. Sorry, Mr. Kerber.
Thank you.
Mr. Conner, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. I've repeatedly, over and over, have asked up here, why don't you clean the catch basins off? Get the pop bottles, the plastic bags, the sticks, the stuff. And the answer I get on that, it wasn't very, I didn't really like the answer. I mean, I thought it was ridiculous. But now you come up with this, if any grass gets out in the street, now you're concerned about the catch basins and you're concerned about this. But it seems to me like you figured out a way to make money off the people again. Let's, let's find them. I, I just don't understand this town. You've got so much money. You've had more money now than you've ever had in my whole life history in this town of Troy, and I'm 77 years old. And, you know, I just don't understand this town. How they get so greedy? You want to penalize people all the time. Instead of, instead of thanking them that they got, they got a job and they can pay your wages and support your lifestyle, and they're just pretty bad by having to keep your lifestyle the way it is. I just don't understand you people up here anymore. Sorry.
Mr. Conner, I'd like to address that. If you would know, and I'd like you to know, that that's, everything you just said is not correct. You will not get a ticket unless you refuse to comply with the city's request to not do that. And what we did is we took away the criminalization of that conduct and made it significantly more user-friendly so that we can issue warnings to people and say, hey, don't throw your stuff out in the street the next time you're going to get a ticket. It's expressly in the committee report, which is available to you, that says the city will only issue a ticket if and when a citizen refuses to comply. So I take great exception to what you just said regarding trying to get into the pockets of citizens. In fact, we did the exact opposite with this and tried to make it significantly more user-friendly.
Well, I appreciate your attitude. I appreciate your comments, but my ideal and my people that I talk to still feel the same way. And, you know, you people just don't care. You just don't care. And just like three years ago or four years ago, whatever it was, city put a thing in the paper, if you can chip the ice and stuff away from your curbs so the flow of water comes down when it does fall out. Well, I'm out there chipping and knocking this ice and stuff away from the curb, not throwing it out in the street, but it's still in the street. Well, my neighbor called. Here come the police. We got a complaint, Mr. Conner, that you're throwing snow and ice out in the middle of the street. I said, do you see any damn snow out in the middle of the street or ice? No, looks good to me, thank you, sorry. But, you know, sometimes it's your neighbors that calls you. Thank you.
You what? That's what we want to have happen. It sounds like that's exactly what should have happened. They came out, they checked it, and there was no action taken. So we appreciate you doing the right stuff.
Well, that would be even before you started this crazy stuff.
Oh.
Okay, we'll move. Any other comments at this point in time? Move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R-54, 2019.
Resolution number R-54, 2019. Resolution approving funding to Troy Main Street, Inc. This will provide funding for year 2020 in the amount of $55,000. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move.
Yep, I'll second.
Move for adoption.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-55, 2019.
Resolution number R-55, 2019. Resolution authorizing the Board of Recreation of the city of Troy, Ohio to enter into a contract with the Troy Recreation Association, Inc., for recreation services. This will provide funding for 2019 for the Troy Rec of $29,000. First reading.
Any questions or comments from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-56, 2019.
Resolution number R-56, 2019. Resolution approving funding to the Troy Development Council for economic development for the city of Troy. This will provide funding for the year 2020 in the amount of $125,000. This is the first reading.
Any questions from council?
Stand.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-57, 2019.
Resolution number R-57, 2019. Resolution authorizing the provision of legal services for the city of Troy, Ohio. This will provide for the appointment of assistant law directors. This is the first reading.
Any questions from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance O-41, 2019.
Ordinance number O-41, 2019. Ordinance amending Section 521.06 of the codified ordinances of the city of Troy, Ohio regarding duty to keep sidewalks in repair. Second reading.
I'd like to make a motion to amend that ordinance.
Mr. Phillips?
If I may, I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance O-41-2019 to read the recommendation that we had on the committee minutes of November 26, 2019.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Heath to amend the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
This is on to amend.
Right.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Now I'll move to suspend.
No. Mrs. Knight, please read the amended ordinance.
Ordinance number O-41, 2019. An amended ordinance amending Section 521.06 of the codified ordinances of the city of Troy, Ohio regarding duty to keep sidewalks in repair. This is the second reading.
Okay, and this will have to go to another reading then because it was amended this evening. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-42, 2019.
Ordinance number O-42, 2019. Ordinance appropriating funds necessary for the various departments and offices of the city of Troy, Ohio for the year 2020. This is the adoption of the budget. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O-43, 2019.
Ordinance Number O-43, 2019, Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number O-53, 2018 as amended by Ordinance Number O-21, 2019, Appropriating Funds Necessary for the Various Departments and Offices of the City of Troy, Ohio for the Year 2020. This is the second reappropriation of funds for 2019. First reading.
Any comments or questions from counsel?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mayor Bemis, do you have any comments this evening?
Um, well, thousands of people joined in this past Friday, and I think it was a wonderful, spectacular, grand illumination kicked off the holiday season in, in a nice flair, and I was really proud of the community that came out on a rather crisp night, but it was a clear, I mean, it was a nice night, no rain, no snow, and it was a wonderful opportunity to see the first gift of Christmas given by Tim and Melody Hess. They were the tree donors this year, and they did not be, they were not able to come up on stage. They brought their grandson to accept on behalf of the family, but it was a wonderful experience, a lot of fine folks, and Thor Senna was here too. So, just hope everybody continues to have a, a lot of peace and joy during this Christmas season, holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, any comments this evening?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. City Auditor, Mr. Friggi, comments?
Thank you, Madam President. We have nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any comments from city council members this evening?
Madam President, I do have a comment. Uh, I want to follow up on my conversation with Mr. Connor because it's obvious that we haven't explained that well enough if he has concerns. So, I would like to just take a minute and with Grant's input, a minor misdemeanor is a hundred dollar fine in court cost, correct?
Well, the maximum would be a hundred and fifty dollar fine on a minor misdemeanor.
And then court costs are one thirty-five for...
It varies, uh, approximately, it depends on, but ninety dollars or so is typical.
So, what, what we did by this, and Mr. Phillips and, and I wasn't even on the committee, but I participated significantly in it, we took the same conduct and changed the penalty from going to the municipal court on a misdemeanor with a potential approximately two hundred and fifty dollar fine in court cost and reduced it to basically a warning followed by, if you refuse to follow the warning, a twenty dollar fine. We didn't do that because we don't think it's a serious issue. We did that because we want the community to buy in and say, hey, we shouldn't be throwing this stuff out there. We don't want motorcycles slipping on grass. We don't want snow throwing back out after it's been plowed. That's the reason that we did this. It wasn't to get into anybody's pot, well, actually, we, we would go less into people's pocket significantly by this, but it, it's obvious by, by those comments that people didn't grasp, and I understand, you know, it's, it's a confusing concept, but it truly is a significantly better user-friendly process than what we had in place, um, which quite honestly, I don't know that anybody on here knew that it was a minor misdemeanor until we started looking into it, and no person on this council created it as a minor misdemeanor. So, we saw that as an opportunity to fix a problem, not to exacerbate it. Uh, that's all.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? Any comments from city staff this evening? Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience?
Bradley, bearing a 105 crestwood, uh, hearing this discussion has really raised a few more questions in my mind than it's really answered with, with regards to this sidewalk ordinance. First of all, the question is, who the heck is going to enforce this? Are we going to have our police department going around and looking for this kind of violation, or are we going to have our street department now become the, the ice and grass police? It, it's a virtually unenforceable ordinance, the way I look at it. We've had this problem in Pittwood for years with people blowing their grass in the streets, and one of the commissions up there wanted to pass an ordinance against it, but it was said that it is virtually unenforceable. It is more of a good Samaritan law than it is a, an enforceable law. So, that's the one question. So, if you have a, so, and the second question I ask is, if you have a street full of snow, how are you going to know who does, who to cite or who to warn? Are you going to go down and warn the whole block? Because I'm going to tell you, you get the first heavy snow, and it is, and another question, are we going to be able to say, you know, maybe these snowplow drivers should not be plowing the street, the driveway shut, because that's where a lot of this is coming from. These snowplow drivers come down through here, they go straight down the middle of the street, plow it right back into the driveways, and you're going to have the same problem every time. So, I think this, this was very poorly thought out, and it should have been thought out a little better. And I hope that before the next reading, you guys will consider some of these things that I've brought up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, did you have any comments? No?
Mr. Connor, 12 Kim South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. I appreciate Mr. Severt, but, uh, the only thing is that two hundred and fifty dollars, City of Troy couldn't get a penny of it. This way, they can get it all. So, you know, I mean, I, I talk to this, the citizens that are common like me, that are nobodies. We're just nobodies. All we are is good for, for money to pay the City of Troy. That's all we're good for. That's all you want from us, is our money. But, uh, you know, I, like I said, you heard me up here how many different times, why don't you clean your catch basins off? Why don't you clean it? Every time it rains, we flood. Well, you know, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? That cost, we'd have to hire more people. That'd take more money. Uh, not, like I said, that's not an answer I like to hear. We've got ten people taking care of this whole town, uh, twenty-five thousand people. Ten people trying to take care of all these streets. It's not enough people. You need to spend some of this money and hire some people in the City of Troy to keep our streets clean, to keep our areas cleaned, and pick up some stuff. Trees, I see trees that are leaning out and getting ready to fall into the streets. I, to me, I'd say, well, if we had some people on the streets, we could get them cut down before they fall on somebody. But, you know, that's me. I, I can look at things differently than you people do. You know, it's just, uh, am I boring you, Mr. Phillips?
No, I'm just, uh, kind of irritated at your comments, Mr. Connor, because if you'd attended the committee meetings, or if you'd have read the minutes from the committee meetings, you might understand why these, this ordinance was passed.
Well, how am I going to get a hold of the meeting, the, the minutes?
You can ask Mrs. Knight for a copy of the minutes, and she'd be glad to get those to you in writing. Um, we, we have, uh, explored this, and it's not to get into the pocketbooks of, of the folks in this city. I just asked Mr. Titterington how much we made off of our parking fines annually, and it's around ten to fifteen thousand dollars. And that ten to fifteen thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket in, in comparison to the budget of our city. In the enforcement of the snow and grass, the ten to fifteen dollars or whatever it might come of this, this fine is a, a fraction of probably that ten to fifteen thousand dollars, so nobody's getting rich of it. And I'm really insulted by your comments that have come here year after year after year, insinuating that, Mr. Connor, I'm really tired of hearing it.
If you're getting tired of it, then why don't you quit?
Because it's very untrue.
Get somebody up there that knows how to say no to some of this stuff.
I'm, I'm almost sorry that I even started this conversation.
I'm sure you are.
In trying to educate you here, we are going after the folks that are creating the problems of putting the grass into the, into the curbs or the sidewalks in the streets in a hazardous condition. Those primarily are the business people that will mow and blow that we have mentioned at the committee meetings time and time again. Other folks that are minor concern but do do this, throw a lot of snow into the streets, and they are also the commercial folks. There is nothing in the current ordinance to enforce or force those folks to correct those conditions. We can go out and we have talked, and actually, Mr. Mullins has talked, till he's blue in the face to these folks, and they just laugh at you and drive away. So, there was nothing that we could do to them. This, in a very minor way, is the only way that we can hopefully stop them from putting stuff into the streets by these minor fines. So, your insults of us here getting rich off of this, or the other people getting rich off of this, or the, the vast amount of money that these fines are generating for our city are just really unwanted, uncalled for, and insulting.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way, but...
It's not a matter of feeling that way, it's a fact. So, it's not me that is, that is just saying that.
How come more people feel like I do out there?
I doubt that very seriously.
Oh, you don't listen to anybody.
Okay.
You don't get out and talk to the, the people. You, you need to get out and talk to your constituents, not just what comes up here, but you need to get out off the chair and walk a little bit and talk a little bit.
Again, you don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, I don't know what I'm talking about. Seventy-seven years old, and I don't know what the heck I'm talking about.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. I'm sorry for you two.
Hi. Do I have to get my name stepped again since everybody knows? Ms. Sue, do you have her name?
Yes, I do, thank you.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I do have it, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I just want answers to questions. I screwed up at the committee meeting because I left my notes at home, but when it comes down to shoveling and salting the streets, does every street in the City of Troy get salted and scraped, or just certain ones get salted and scraped?
Mr. Titterington or Mr. Mullins, who would like to address this?
Uh, no, go ahead. Save it, Jerry. So, uh, the, the answer is, is that each snow event is different.
Correct.
So, it depends on how much snow, what type of snow, how quickly it comes down, whether it rained beforehand, whether the pavement was dry or wet beforehand, the temperature of the asphalt, there are many variables that come into play. But, as a rule, the priority in which we salt and/or plow is we start with the mains.
Correct.
That would be, uh, Main Street, Market Street.
I know the zones, yes, I understand that, sir.
Well, the zones are just dividing the city up. The mains are the, uh, the most important roads. There are main roads, there are arteries, there are state highways, so we, uh, we always hit those first.
Correct.
Uh, as well as the bridges, because the bridges will freeze before the rest of the roads will. Uh, the second is, is that we have a classification of roads known as secondary streets. Those are, um, the ones that feed into the local roads, the cul-de-sacs, the subdivisions. Third priority then is our local roads and our cul-de-sacs. Depends on, uh, all those, uh, variables that I listed as to when we will go out, uh, what kind of treatment we will do.
So, not every streets get salted?
Not every street gets salted.
It depends on the thing.
Well, it, it, again, it depends on the event. There are some events where every, every road will get salted and plowed. There are some events where the mains and the bridges will get plowed.
So, if you're salting the primaries and the secondaries, shouldn't the arteries also get them too?
Arteries would be the, uh...
The side streets like Ella Street. If they ever get salted.
Ella Street is a local street, so it is not, it is a, the third priority, it is not, that is a local street, so it's much less traveled.
Correct. So, I'm just trying to get this figured out in my head, sir. Why do I have to clean my sidewalks all the way down from point A to point B, salt them down, correct? You guys want it down where people can walk safely, the police officers, the firemen's, anyone that has to come to your house. You should have that safety. So, why isn't my street being able to be salted if I have to scrape everybody's sidewalks because I have elderly people here, and I don't mind doing it for them, and salting their sidewalks down, when the city doesn't think my street's important enough to salt it down in case of a fire truck, or a policeman, or a squad? That's my question. It's always been my question. My neighbor used to have the squad there at least once a week. I have to go out and salt everything down for her. This should have been the city's department if, does everybody on the council, do you guys get your streets salted and shoveled? No salt?
No, not all the time.
Well, you don't live on an artery, get on an artery. But, that's the whole thing, is you guys are saying the sidewalk thing, and I quietly understand it, I do, I'm backing a hundred percent on that because I have done that, but why isn't the streets just as important as my sidewalks?
Ma'am, I, I just want to address what, because again, this is a clarification so people understand. The, the reference to keeping your sidewalk in repair is codified state law.
Correct.
That, that's not law that we wrote. So, plowing, or, or what Jerry would send out would be discretionary. There's no state law that says these are the streets and how you, the priority to do that. That's a decision that Jerry and Patrick and maybe with the hospital here, they're going to change some of those streets and what becomes more, it needed to be done quickly because of, of those sorts of issues. But, that's a discretionary, uh, decision that's, as, which just explained to you, is going to be made on a case-by-case basis.
Correct.
Your sidewalk, my sidewalk, Bill Twist's sidewalk, everybody else who just commented, that, all we did was codify Ohio Revice Code.
I understand that.
Okay.
But, that's the reason I'm asking this question now, is because last year, you couldn't barely get down Ella Street because...
But, how was it, how was it...
But, by then, they scraped it, but when it melted, it froze. So, it was pure ice all the way down out.
And we've had a lot...
That was salt, salt truck.
And I think with the new, with the most recent snow event, I don't know, I think Robin posted on Facebook, what did you guys, you guys put out tons, how much salt went out?
A hundred and, I think it was a hundred and twenty-six.
Right. Yeah, I have that on the notes there, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, and I understand that, but I'm not just saying the little snow like we just had, like last year. And last year was strange, trust me, but why isn't it, you know, you scraped it, okay, we need to throw some ice down here, it is going to start refreezing again, when we're nothing but pure ice. I don't want to do that to my sidewalk. But why isn't it, you know, you scrape it, okay, we need to throw some ice down here, it is going to start refreezing again, when we're nothing but pure ice. I don't want to do that to my sidewalk. I don't want my mailman, I don't want the fire department, if they would, God help, come, have to come and help someone on them sidewalks. So I go out and I salt them. And I'm just asking for the same respect. If I'm good enough to follow your rules, then I think we should be able to throw some salt every once in a while down on other streets.
If I understand correctly, and if...
We're comparing apples to oranges, we really are here.
It's really mine.
Yes, we are, ma'am, with all due respect. When you're talking about the roads, you're not talking about pedestrians, you're not talking about postal carriers, you're not talking about people that are actually walking on the sidewalk. That's much different than somebody that's in a vehicle with four tires and many of which now are SUVs or trucks.
And they slide into people's cars.
And, you know, if there are, if there are ice events, I believe there was one of those last year, there is, just about always, every year, every community in this belt of Ohio runs into that. It happens. You can't, you can throw all the salt in the world on it, but depending on whatever the conditions were before and after the event, sometimes that happens. And all we can do is we can go back, and we do, go back out and we throw more salt down. And we have.
On your, on certain streets.
We have, GPS, how many times have we have hit the streets in Troy?
So I need to get on primary or secondary streets to be able to...
A couple of the comments I'd like to make, and Grant, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the reason that we keep our sidewalks clear is for our own protection.
Correct.
Because someone could sue us if they fall on our sidewalks.
If you don't touch us, I'm mistaken, right?
We're doing it for our own protection, not because the state or the city tells us to do it. As far as the streets are concerned, if you have an ice event and you're, and you know that there's people on your street that may need assistance from the fire department or the squad or whatever, I believe that if you would call the city and let them know that your street is extremely icy and you have a problem and there's elderly people, I would bet that someone would come out and take a look at it and perhaps put some salt on it.
Okay.
But I think that if they don't, if they're not aware, you know, again, it's a cul-de-sac, it's a side street, and if they're not aware of it, and I'm not saying that every time that we get a little bit of snow or ice that you need to be calling them, but, but I'm saying that if, you know, if it's been a few days and it's really been bad and you feel like there's a real issue, I think if you call and talk to them, someone will address it.
Okay, they'll start complaining then.
That's as far as...
When I feel like it needs it. No, and I'm just saying, I haven't complained until this past year. So, but anything, anyway, I think what Lester's also saying, I'm hoping I'm right, the catch basins, you know, there's stormwater. People leave the leaves and stuff out there now, so they're not getting picked up yet, or if they did, they might have missed some. I'm not saying it hasn't, because I don't put my leaves out front, I put them back in my flock.
They've made a few rounds, and they'll probably make another one.
Right.
Before the season's over.
But my thing is, is people leave that there. And then the city comes and they scrape the stuff on top of the bas, I don't know what they're called.
Catch basins.
Okay.
Catch basin.
Then it's up to us to go out, the citizens on that street, to go out and clean that all off. And that's all I'm thinking what he was talking about, is, you know, we keep doing it, we're paying for someone to do it, but we're doing it. You know, every time it floods, I'm out there, because I do have a couple of people that don't care, and I'm out there scraping, or I'm taking the weeds out of the curb. And they loosen them and it goes there and it just sits there.
Can I ask you a question? How many times have you called into the city in...
I don't complain a lot to the cities till this year, that's what I'm saying.
There's a saying...
Because I'm getting too old to kind of keep up with it for these people.
And I guess you don't know what you don't know.
Right, that's why I'm here. Like I told you the first time, I'm here to learn.
You came, you said, hey, there's a lot of kids using this park, we need a restroom. The city responded, right?
Correct.
We don't know what you don't know. Jared Mullins is here, I'm sure Patrick's going to confirm this. If we, if the city get, because I know I called one time on one over, I don't know my streets that well, but one where we were walking our dogs, one with head sticks and stuff in it, within forty-eight hours, it was cleared out. Mr. Mullins, I assume, will confirm this. If we get a phone call, or I wouldn't get the phone call, but if the city gets a phone call that says, hey, this, this is backed up or clogged up, I think Mr. Mullins kind of, that's part of his deal, is to go out there and look at that and fix it.
Mr. Mullins and I talked after the committee meeting, and he, he answered a lot of my, more of my questions.
Yeah, so, but again, it, you don't know what you don't know. If you see that, you need to call in. Mr. Connor, if he sees it, he needs to call in and say, this is where, where it's going on. I mean...
Honestly, I didn't think it'd do any good to call the city. No disrespect.
Did it do good?
The other reason why I'm saying that is because we've been fighting for two years with my neighbor's house.
Did it do good with the restroom?
Yes.
Okay.
And I appreciate that.
Well, I, you don't know what to...
More than anything you know, and there's kids down there, doesn't it?
We appreciate you coming and letting us know these issues and asking your questions.
But that, you know, and I'm not the smartest person, I'm going to tell you that right now when it comes to all this. You guys talk way over my head with your does and dots and all that good stuff, but, you know, I don't, did not actually know. I have lost some trust in the council. I am trying my best to get it back. And the bathrooms, it jumped it, because everybody kept saying it ain't going to do you no good. Well, it did. And now I'm just asking, you know, does our city, our streets, see, that's the whole thing, I'm just now tearing, because I'm going to take care of it, and I'm getting up there in ages. So, you know, what's going to happen when I ain't there to help these people? And don't the City of Troy have a landscaping list of people that they send out to clean, like the bushes and the grass and those things like that, for people that don't take care of themselves and charge?
We have someone that will, I mean, we have contractors that will go out and mow for us if there's, if a house is not taken care of, and then we build that.
So that would be something good to look into. I mean, yeah, it goes through their taxes, but, you know, that's better than them getting warned over and over and over, saying, I can't do it, I can't do it, I can't do it.
As far as the house you keep referring to, I would question, is that on our list?
We have been inspecting that house since the first time Mrs. Pike, Ms. Pike brought it up. And we have, I don't believe that we found any issues that the city can legally enforce through property maintenance, but we continue to monitor and keep track of what's going on out there.
Because we have to work within the law also, we can't just...
Well, Shannon's already told me. She, they hired someone to come in to cut all the trash and all of the bushes and all the trees and stuff and weeds. They came in and they was there for fifteen minutes and they left. So, you know, Shannon and I stood out back and talked about this, because the tree behind their garage, my garage, is so rotted, the other day, I thought for sure she's coming down. And like she said, Debbie, give me time. I said, gave you two years. Now we need to get something done with this house.
Okay, so you're working with the city?
Yes, Shannon and I, you know, we've been going through it. I see her coming down our neighborhood, and then she stops and talks to me about it. And she told me what I should do the next time critters are running around and in and out of that house, take pictures and send them to her and things like that. So, yeah, we're still trying. But that's the whole thing, is who takes care of the abandoned houses? You know? Who's going to take care of those? If they don't care about mowing their yard, I mean, you couldn't even tell they had a sidewalk this past summer. So that's the whole thing, is, you know, I didn't even know there was an ordinance with sidewalks, to tell you the truth, because that's been like that for five or ten years. So that's one reason I don't complain, because I don't always get into it. Then when I do think I found it, it's totally against what I don't, you know, don't know. So I'm just here to learn and help as much as I can. I, you know, your trusts are coming back, little at a time, but that's how I feel.
Thank you.
Amy Shannon, 1560 apartment D, Windridge Place. Two quick comments. First off, I live on a cul-de-sac that I think is like a sixiary street, there's rarely. But what I have noticed is when we have a lot of snow, it gets plowed. I've seen it be pre-treated. It kind of surprised me when it was pre-treated the one time because I didn't expect it. So I thank the city, because I feel like my street's been pretty well taken care of considering it's a one-block cul-de-sac. My second comment is very presumptuous, which is, several years ago with Partners in Hope, we attempted to put together a list of volunteers to do some around-the-house kind of things. I think with the current flavor and maybe a little bit of help and push from the city, it's something that maybe could happen there. It would fit in with the caregivers program there really well. So just a thought and suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say a little more?
Sure. Certainly.
I don't upset anybody, but just this week, I seen Mr. Mullins was out in Westbrook area picking up leaves. And I said, what are you doing driving a truck? I thought you was a foreman. Well, we got two or three guys off on holidays, vacation or whatever. I said, well, there's, again, that's my example of, you don't have enough street employees working for the City of Troy to maintain all these streets, now you got to have the supervisor driving the truck. I mean, it just, you know, and Mr. Seabird up there, what he says, you know, I mean, it, when they do plow, and I've asked his question before, are the drivers supposed to turn their blades? Yeah, they're supposed to turn their blades. Well, evidently, somebody don't know what they're doing or don't care, because they plow our driveways in, then we have to clean them back out again? What are we supposed to do with all that stuff? I've even had them go so fast past it when they do plow, that they even throw to clear up on the sidewalk after I've done my own sidewalk. I got to do it again. Can I find the city? Am I allowed to find the city for doing stuff like that that makes more work for me? Fair's fair, boys. Fair's fair on the block.
Any other comments? Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peaceful week.